Priority given to people there. I don't feel easy about it. I still feel that somehow, somewhat, that that language added in there does give rise to certain legal concerns under discrimination law. That's how I feel. Would you take a little, a little, a better crack at it somehow?
Well, what is the, uh, what is the protected class that you're concerned about here that might be
Well.
discriminated against through this language? We're, we're offering guaranteed priority use for the field house for students at these schools or residents in this community, all of whom are primarily, or I shouldn't say all of whom, but primarily these students are people of color.
I understand that. I do understand that. I, I do understand that maybe all the, uh, the community around there may fit into various types of protected categories under 151B or for that matter, 98, uh, um, 98A. I understand that. But again, socioeconomic cannot be just, uh, so socioeconomic status cannot be just one of the criteria in equity in my mind. So, you know, I, I, the, the, the way it is written can be perceived as, as a way of highlighting, just giving preference to socioeconomic status. And that I have somewhat, you know, I, well, if, if you all feel comfortable with it.
Different socioeconomic statuses in Harbor Point. I don't think that would be. And I think because we are assuring that, you know, the young people of the district getting the use.
Right. And I think that's actually an important point to, um, to hang on for a second because, um, you know, the preference that we're requesting for this lease is not to the exclusion of all other users of the building. This is simply a preference or a set aside for, um, a certain level of access to the building for our, our students. So in short, you know, I, um, what we're ensuring is that by entering into a lease for our property, we're ensuring some level of that continuing access for our constituents. And I'm, I'm relatively comfortable with that.
Okay. So long as you guys are comfortable with it. My only concern is that, you know, if the, the, the added language somehow does give rise to adverse impact, then we should revisit it. That, that's why I say, you know, on, on.
Well, perhaps I, you know, to the, to the same, um, to the same notion that we looked at the written notice that BPS must issue to allow the building to proceed following the permitting process. And a request that, um, that includes some sort of specific direction on the percentage of set aside that we would be looking for, for access. We can also ensure that the district undertakes a, a review for any sort of discriminatory concerns. Is that, does that work for you, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Other questions or concerns? Ms. Robinson?
Yeah, I'm just, again, I'm just trying to understand about the, the other green space. Is that green space adequate enough for things like football or other kinds of outdoor sports? Or is it just a, a green space where kids could have recess, but not really be an outdoor athletic field for a high school?
I think that would depend, um, Ms. Robinson, on how they plotted that from the Impact Advisory Group and how the building was positioned and where the green space actually ended up around the, the space. And so that's, uh, I don't think there's room for a football field. But maybe a small soccer field or some other outdoor play areas or basketball court or those types, types of things.
May I, Mr. Chair, may I make one comment on that as well, please?
Please.
I agree with the comments that was made on public comments before that literally DC High is right next door. UMass has fields. Between reaching out to President Grace Carter Regan at DC High, who I have no doubt would, would try to be a good neighbor, or the new chancellor at UMass Boston, who is, they continue to be very focused in making this a K through 16 community anyway. I'm sure, you know, we have, we have students that are traveling halfway across the city to play in fields. You know, we have students in Brighton that are traveling several miles to go to the field that we share with Simmons College that they built down along the Charles River. I'm sure we could figure out a way to have a partnership with DC High and/or, um, UMass Boston. If we did ultimately, you know, when we build a high school and quite frankly, if we still have football at that point. The way we're going on high school football. I don't think any of us want our children playing high school football. So I, I'll put more importantly soccer as well. So, you know, this is, this is how we, we do partnerships in the city and we work with them to, you know, and, and I think Superintendent Casillas pointed out at the, at the last session when we were talking about the CARES Act that due to the Title I funding formula that the Department of Ed put in place, DC High, which has 36 Title I students end up getting several million dollars of funding, I believe, right? I think we can have a conversation with DC High and President Grace Carter Regan, who is, you know, an incredible partner and doing an incredible job running that school about how we have a partnership in a shared neighborhood.
Well, Mr. O'Neal, I'm not sure they took it. So we had to do the set aside, but I'm not sure that BC took it. There were some private schools that decided not to.
I'm still very glad.
To get you off track here.
And now they readjusted their title. So we've had to take some of that back now. So because we had.
Off topic, folks. Thank you.
No.
So, um, just to recap, I want to go back and read the, the vote once again and then ask for a motion. So what we would be voting on is, um, the, uh, make sure I get the language here, entertain a motion to approve the subdivision of 315 to 325 Mount Vernon Street, Dorchester and request for proposal selection of the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester as amended. And the amendment is, uh, as follows, voted to authorize the subdivision of the parcel located at 315 to 325 Mount Vernon Street and to approve the selection of the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester as the most advantageous proposal in response to an RFP offering a 30-year lease of the subdivided parcel located at 315 Mount Vernon Street. The lease shall specify that work on the parcel will not begin until all applicable permits and approvals have been obtained and BPS has issued a written notice to proceed, excuse me. The lease shall also require the guaranteed priority use for the field house shall be given first to the students of the Dever and Lomcormick or successor schools on that property, then to the other BPS students and then to Harbor Point residents. Now that I've read that into the record, is there a motion to approve this, um, resolution as presented, as amended, excuse me?
Some.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman?
Abstained.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Tran? Mr. Tran?
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. Abstained.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
That's three A's, two no's and two abstentions. Motion does not pass.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, does, um, doesn't a motion pass when there's a majority vote?
Sorry.
You need a majority vote of the committee?
Um.
It's a majority vote of those voting.
Yep. That's what I thought. So I believe the motion does pass three to two.
I'm sorry. The motion passes three to two.
Okay. Well, thank you. And, um, I know this is a, a long and arduous process and, um, you know, I, I, I empathize with the position that, you know, we have much better things to be worrying about in a pandemic right now. But nevertheless, this is a project that's been two years in the making and we have regular business to tend to as a committee. And we need to keep our, um, the business of this district moving, even in spite of the fact that we are working through, uh, the tough times in this pandemic. So, you know, first I want to thank, uh, the committee for having a hard, tough, earnest conversation here. I want to thank, um, especially my colleagues for making the, um, the important additions to, uh, the, uh, the motion that was just voted on. I think that makes it stronger. I think we've carried out what, um, what we intended to do beginning back in May of 2018, which was to ensure that we get the highest and best use out of this property for our BPS students. And we've done so tonight by making sure that, uh, we preserve access to that building, uh, for the students, uh, in those, in the buildings that exist on that property as well as the children that live nearby, um, the property on Harbor Point. And this conversation is not over. We've taken the next step in this process now that again is two years in the making and probably has several more years, uh, to go between the approval process and the building process. But we're allowing this, um, this proposal to move forward now and move to the next stage where, uh, the planning, uh, administration plus Ms. Robinson, can take over and can continue, uh, the community process that has begun with the 10 meetings between school committee and, um, community engagement and BPS over these last two years. So, um, I look forward to having, um, look forward to seeing, um, the, uh, the district get to work on this and to get teachers and students and administrators involved in the, um, IHE process. I look forward to, um, the continuing conversation, uh, in the community here. And I look forward to seeing, um, the, uh, the, uh, the winners of this proposal, the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester. And, um, most importantly, the Martin Richard Foundation, as they continue to, um, build a memory of their child in this community. Through, uh, the gifts that, uh, the foundation is providing to children in this community, continue to thrive and continue to serve, uh, the children that, um, that live in the Dorchester and Southwest scenarios. And that's all I have to say on that. So thank you, uh, just one other thing. Thank you, Mr. Consalvo, for your hard work on this as well. And thank you, Superintendent, for marshaling the forces on getting this done. So, um, we do have a little bit more business this evening. We tried to keep it light, anticipating that there was, um, going to be quite a bit of, um, interest generated by the reopening plan this evening. But, uh, one item that we wanted to make sure, um, was reviewed and voted on before we got to the start of the school year was, um, the temporary suspension of the maximum age assignment and enrollment policy. Now, folks will remember that this is, this is an issue that's been before the committee on a number of occasions over the last few years. And we, um, voted most recently last year, uh, to fix, um, the policy to ensure that there is a smooth transition for, um, students that are aging out of our system into the adult education, um, programs. But like so many other things with the effects of COVID, and I apologize Superintendent and, and Mr. Allen, if I'm digging into your, your very brief presentation at this point at a quarter to midnight. But I wanted, uh, the, um, a brief here because I believe this is a, um, a fairly easy vote for us to take. These students have been affected in a way, uh, that's been similar to a number of the other students across the district by remote learning and lack of access to, um, appropriate learning opportunities. And so I think this is a very easy, um, issue for the district, uh, and the committee to undertake, particularly considering the, the great care and, and interest that we've taken in at-risk students over the years. And so I'll hand it off to Mr. Allen, Manny Allen. He's the director of the BPS Reengagement Center. And Mr. Carlos Diaz, if, if he's still with us, yes, it looks like he is, the coordinator of School Services for Alternative Education, uh, to please present their report.
My video won't start up, so I'll just continue with my, um.
Let me see if I can do something about that for you, Mr. Diaz. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good evening, School Committee members and Superintendent Casellas. As mentioned, my name is Carlos Diaz. I am the coordinator of School Services for Alternative Ed. I support Dr. Elia Bruggerman and Dr. Lynda McIntyre in the Office of Secondary Schools. In alignment with the steps that the Boston Public Schools has taken to do no harm to students, our office, the Office of Secondary Schools, is requesting that students currently expected to age out of their school assignments due to the maximum age assignment and enrollment policy, AMT 5, be allowed to remain in their current schools through the end of the 2021 school year or until graduation requirements are satisfied. It is important to note that COVID-19 pandemic has brought about some unanticipated challenges that have greatly affected many of our most vulnerable populations. Furthermore, if granted, the one-year suspension of the AMT 5 would and does align with the following commitments of our strategic plan. Commitment one, to eliminate the opportunity and achievement gaps. Commitment three, to amplify all voices, which highlights the importance of meeting the needs of students of color, English language learners and students with special needs. I would like to provide you with some highlights and a brief overview of the maximum age and enrollment policy, AMT 5. The school committee approved the policy in 2019. The policy designates the Reengagement Center as the primary department responsible to assist in the enrollment, referral and transfer of our overage students. The policy provides guidance for schools to offer additional supports and transitional planning for overage students not making academic progress towards graduation. In addition, the policy offers the potential for satellite adult school programming through the Boston Central Adult High School. At this time, I'd like to turn over this presentation to my colleague Emmanuel Allen, the executive director of the Reengagement Center, who will provide you with some important data points on these students. Manny?
Good evening, School Committee members, Superintendent, and also my colleagues who are still up late. Glad to, glad to be aboard. In response to a request to suspend the max age policy that was initiated by the Boston, by Boston Adult Technical Academy High, or BADA, members of the Office of Secondary Schools analyzed the impact on all BPS students who will turn 21 years old on or before August 31. That analysis showed that we had 146 students, um, that sort of, uh, fit that category. So 78 of them, um, will be omitted or not affected, uh, by the suspension if passed. So 17 of these students are from Boston Day and Evening Academy. They have a charter agreement with DESI that allows students to stay there for their, uh, 20, up to their 23rd birthday. And then 61 of the students are special ed students who have transition plans for after their second, uh, after their 22nd birth, birthday per the IEP, uh, which means that they're, they're taken care of and not affected. So that leaves us with 68 students, um, who will benefit, uh, from the suspension of this policy. So 40, and just quickly, 44 are from BADA. And they have no impact to school funding because they're level funded. And then 24 are from seven o, o, other schools. The, these schools are, uh, under the, they're funded through the districts, the district's weighted student fund model. Um, and again, they, they, they will have, uh, if passed, this will have minimal to no impact on schools. Financial impact on schools, I should say. Some additional data, uh, looking at our 68 students, um, 84% of, uh, English learners, 96% are socially economically disadvantaged, 27% black and 71% Latinx. Next slide, please. Just again, uh, the, the students with, uh, with IEPs, uh, again, they have a transition plan. So again, they will not be affected, uh, by this policy. And the Office of Special, uh, Special Education will work with these students on an individual basis to make sure that they are well positioned to transition to their next program. Next slide, please. Just, uh, some equity points that I wanted to point out one second. Um, again, uh, th, this is very equitable and a very good outcomes for these students. Uh, bottom line is, these students will have a hundred percent chance of, of graduating this, uh, this year if we, if we let them stay. Um, another thing is equity is opportunity and students remain in their current settings with familiar teachers, classmates and program. And we all know that that's very important for students, um, in terms of transitioning. And plus it's already a hard transitional year. So this will be a great benefit, uh, to our students. And again, equity as commitment, uh, making conditions as favorable as possible for the specifics group of students who should, who are traditionally marginalized students. Uh, next slide, please. So I just wanted to, to, to say that essentially a yes vote essentially grants a one-year waiver for all impacted students. And I wanted to emphasize that this does not take away the student's choice to take advantage of alternative schools or adult ed. It does not, they still have the choice, uh, they have the opportunity to choose what is best for them. Um, and this personal choice and their, and their family choice. And a no vote will require students who turn 21 years old, uh, on or before August 31st to exit. Unenrolled will be referred to adult ed. So again, I'd like to thank you, uh, everyone for your attention and consideration, and we are open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, and thank you, Mr. Diaz. Most of all, for bringing some, uh, good news tonight to talk about and also, um, more importantly, for your brief, uh, presentation. As I mentioned at the start, uh, you know, this is an issue that's been very near and dear to us. And, um, we appreciate being partners with the two of you. I know you've both been very, um, very involved in this issue over the years. So I want to take a moment to look around at the committee and see if there are, um, comments or, um, questions, uh, on this very straightforward proposal. No? Okay. Must be the hour. Or must, it must just be the clarity with which you've, uh, you, you managed to win us over.
Mr. Chair, it is both the hour and it is also a reflection of the trust that many of us hold in Mr. Allen and Mr. Diaz.
Absolutely.
And the work they have done in this topic over many years. So I, I support, I think this is the right thing to do.
Absolutely. And I, I will tell you, I mean, as we started this out, this is about as easy as it gets for us, you know, in, in terms of the students that are at the heart of our district that need the most support from us, you know, did it? This is, this is the work that we, you know, that we come to do in this district. And, um, we appreciate the, um, the attention that you give to these students. And, you know, we want to do what's right to make sure that these, uh, students are in the best position of succeed as they, as they move forward in life. So we'll look forward to, um, taking action on this with our next meeting, uh, which will be on August 19th. So hopefully we'll, uh, we'll take, uh, action a little earlier in the meeting. We won't make you stay up past your bedtime. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Mr. Diaz, and we look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final report this evening, um, just under midnight, is a composite of the superintendent's performance evaluation for the 2019, 2020 school year. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to Dean Coleman, who's done a tremendous job, uh, leading this effort, particularly as we've moved to remote, um, and particularly with, uh, the guidance that we've received from, DESI and, uh, the Mass Association, Association of School Committees to, um, what is the word I'm looking for? Streamline, uh, the process, um, during the, the current pandemic. So Dean Coleman, uh, excuse me, Dr. Coleman, please take it away.
Just for reference, uh, both, uh, Chair LaCanto and, uh, ex-chair O'Neal, that doctor or dean, both are, both are acceptable, that they, they both work.
It's like ambassador or senator, right? You never, you never lose the title.
That, that's okay. You, both, both work. So, uh, whichever, whichever comes out of here about, uh, mister would be the only inappropriate, uh, thing to say. It is late and, um, um, so I want, I don't want to, I'm, I'm assuming that people have read this and so I want to kind of address the highlights. The first is I want to thank you for, uh, the opportunity to, to, um, to do this. And I also want to thank the superintendent for the degree to which she has taken this seriously and engaged with us fully and provided a, a thoughtful and, um, engaging self-evaluation. And then each of us has been sat down and reviewed what she had to say and came forward with, um, comments on the individual cases. Just, just, um, in, in the interest of time to get, to get the discussion, is very clear that everyone was very sensitive to the fact that there was the year coming through and the redoing of the strategic plan and the visiting of the schools and a lot of things are moving forward. And then COVID just kind of disrupted everything. But as, as, uh, Chair LaCanto mentioned earlier, the discussion about the, the, uh, the Boys and Girls Club is that, um, business still continues even in the middle of the pandemic. And so a lot of the issues that we brought up were about how do we think forward and deal with the core issues of the district, uh, as we move forward. So, um, oh, I'm going too quickly through here. So, uh, this, a quick review of the noteworthy accomplishments, uh, the acquisition of financial support, uh, through the mayor's office and the three-year budgeting process was, was remarkable, very useful. The pulling together of strategic vision, uh, and community engagement and the development of that, that building great trust. We universally are really impressed by the, uh, her willingness and ability to, uh, create our focus on equity, uh, down to the creation of the Equity Round Tables as a part of the pandemic. And then, and then, uh, the response to the, uh, pandemic as the wheels came off the bus in terms of bringing us together and really working towards solutions, even as challenging as they'd be. The challenges, um, were, and these are things that, uh, you know, I, I, I want to be very clear that these were challenges, not necessarily the superintendent's creation. Uh, these are things we dealt with for a period of time, but that these are still things that, uh, have, uh, influenced her progress in the year. And the first is that, that the central office has been challenged for a while. And so we're challenged to kind of create a central office that is clearly engaged in building continuous improvement across the district. And it's a challenge that the superintendent has highlighted, taken on. The pandemic has emphasized, uh, some of our challenges here. That's certainly one that we've all recognized as a problem. And then, and it gets, uh, the symptoms are in various different ways. Everywhere from how do we manage the autonomy in the schools in a useful way to others. Uh, the other challenge is building out, you know, really addressing the diversity of the BPS student population and bringing forward a systematic plan and, uh, process for having, creating a culturally and linguistically relevant pedagogy that, uh, provides a high-quality learning experience for all our children is, uh, we, we were still working on the design and we're all frustrated, uh, along with the superintendent with the fact that we're, we're not making as much progress as we'd like in getting that plan implemented. And then the third challenge is creating, uh, consensus in terms of bringing together very diverse viewpoints across the city, across the different, uh, groups that, that, that were engaged with, we heard it tonight, you know, between, uh, the Boys Club and the, uh, the, the residents of the area, the Dever, uh, the, uh, man, managing a useful and powerful relationship with our community partners. These are consensus that, that are, that, that are difficult. And the other challenge that, uh, as part of that is we have great urgency for movement, but we also know this can take time to create the right systems. So there, there's going to be frustrations in that process. And so I think collectively, we feel that there are certain priorities that we want to encourage the superintendent to consider. And the one is to build an organizational, uh, organizational structure that will drive improvement now and extend equity and excellence over time. As, as, as we, we, we know, over the past six, seven years, we've had, uh, a lot of, uh, turnover in the leadership of the district and that, uh, both at the top and, and throughout this, throughout the system in terms of the principles and, and. and throughout this, throughout the system in terms of principles and, and, and system principles and then superintendents, we've had so much change. And so we need to build a organizational structure with a certain cloud of authority and responsibility, uh, that will build the trust we need to, uh, move forward. Um, the other priority is to, uh, stay really focused on closing opportunity achievement gap for, uh, is, 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 is a major responsibility that we all feel. And the demonstrate, the superintendent demonstrated the skills, need to hold that important conversation, encourage that focus, and we need to move forward to really seeing how we'll have a operational plan that we begin to track over time. And then resources, we continue to encourage the superintendent to recruit financial, political, practical resources we need to improve our performance as a, as a gap closing district. So in terms of, uh, presenting, um, uh, the response to the eight areas that the superintendent, uh, described in her, her performance evaluation, they're ordered in terms of, um, uh, what we would say, um, what in our collective evaluation from some of her, the strongest, uh, um, things that she, that superintendent has demonstrated this year to the, uh, down to the ones where we're not as strong. I would say that it's very clear that as a group, we're rating her as effective or three on a four-point scale. There's variation with people and what people saw were her, her strengths and, and, and opportunities for growth, uh, but this, this is, uh, the summary of all that. So the first is that, uh, has demonstrated right away, uh, a great understanding of physical responsibility and budgetary control and very, very, has been able to work well with the mayor's office to kind of pull together a budget and increase our resources. And, and that was clearly a, a strength, uh, that the superintendent has demonstrated and, and, and we want to affirm, um, her skills in that area. Uh, the second is a focus on equity and excellence and this attention, um, and the, the superintendent has made it clear that the pathway to excellence is, has to be oriented in equitable, uh, access for all our students. And that's something that we, we collectively want to affirm and continue to focus on as the years go forward. Um, the superintendent with a breadth of her experience has demonstrated a good understanding of the roles and responsibilities superintendent. She comes with a wealth of understanding as to the roles, uh, these roles and responsibilities. And then her response to the superintendent has reflected the ability to reach out across a broad spectrum for information and ideas and try to develop a, uh, have a useful impact across the community. But as we have heard tonight, is a very difficult, well, it's going to be very hard to satisfy all the people in a variety of ways that people need to move forward. And then finally, the, the, the need for the, the, the superintendent to continue to build her management team within the, uh, central office to ensure a stable structure and the long-term success for our students. And that, that again, having inherited a, a system and, 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 well, fucks me is the word that's coming to my mind, by the way, uh, there's no reason to believe that someone could walk in and immediately in, in six months, turn that around. That's clearly one of the areas that, uh, we're still seeing some need for growth and development for, uh, for us, for the district. And then, uh, communication and interpersonal skills, there's no doubt that the, uh, the, the superintendent was very eager to make contact with the broad society of the district in her, 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 her visit, her, the tour she made of all the schools was demographical of that. And then Dr. Cassilius has very strong in personal skills and is working at building relationships across the district. Um, certainly the quality and clarity of public announcements has improved since the appointment of superintendent. And although, uh, Dr. Cassilius is eager to, to be available to meet with a wide range of individuals and groups, uh, part of the challenge is to meet our expressed goals is, is that she has to make changes that not everyone is comfortable with. And so there's still a lot, there's still more work that has to be done, uh, to build kind of a, uh, both an internal, external, uh, understanding of what are the priorities and what are the issues that are happening and how people can, uh, inform, uh, and work with the superintendent to move forward. So that's, that's an area that, uh, will take work to, to develop over time. Um, the, the Dr. Cassilius has demonstrated a deep commitment to creating equitable access to high-quality learning for all students and is commended for creating school-based district-wide equity round tables, which was really focused both on student improvement and, and equitable, uh, access to quality learning. Um, the superintendent's been effective in initiating broad-based conversations as how, uh, we will create an effective learning system, um, and still is, but was working still towards developing solutions, uh, and, and moving towards fully articulated plans. Uh, you know, the, again, the issues of, we, we have a lot of things on our plate, you know, the high school redesign, the DESI review, the work transformation schools, great configuration, manage your resources. And so there are a lot of issues and the resolutions are at this point unclear. And I think that that will lead to natural frustration and, and concern on everyone's part, uh, but we want to really emphasize that, uh, as, as we know, the job number one right now is how we're going to manage school reopening. And then sometime between the reopening of the schools and the budget season, we want to, we want a more coherent plan for driving academic excellence and innovation. Um, and then, um, several of us raised the concern of what are the cross-cutting issues that we feel we're not quite sure how they're being addressed yet. And again, with the pandemic and other issues, it's reasonable and it's also early in our career, but the needs of our ELL students, our special needs students and the interactive ELL and special needs is an area that, that we want to lift up as something that we, we're all eager to get more clarity about what is our plan and how will we know that's working. In terms of judgment and decision-making, uh, we want to commend the superintendent for the effective manner in which opinions and ideas have been solicited from the community throughout the listening tour, um, and, but then in the drive to make this plan operational, um, but the urgency and getting buy-in is an area that we feel needs, uh, to be integrated more and needs to come together in a more, um, fluid fashion in order for us to move forward successfully as a district. And then productivity, organizing and planning, uh, this, Dr. Cassilius has seen as remarkably responsible to the questions and concerns we raise. And we've also been impressed by the multiple initiatives in which superintendent has engaged in a timely and effective manner and working and, and to accomplish this while building relationships with a new city, new colleagues, working with an engaged mayor, the accounts are quite remarkable. Um, we're concerned, and I think, uh, we put this up earlier, is that the level productivity without a stronger organizational structure, uh, we, we worry that won't be sustainable until a stronger internal organizational structure evolves and develops. We're worried that, uh, too many initiatives will, uh, not be able to move forward at the same level productivity that's been accomplished this year. And so we really want to encourage a focus on, on creating a system where authority and responsibility can be delegated by the superintendent so that, uh, the, the, uh, Dr. Cassilius can focus on managing the system rather than being so deeply engaged in running it. Example being tonight where we talked about, you know, the superintendent should not necessarily be responsible for every time a school or an office has to close because of the pandemic. That should be something that should be delegated in a way so that she can focus her on long, on larger issues. A collaboration and teamwork is a difficult challenge in, in, and the district across, but, uh, uh, the commander for the effective manner, which, uh, the, Dr. Cassilius has engaged external stakeholders in the district and then, um, and, and, and the communications to, uh, the internal stakeholders has, has improved, but that is a, an area in which, um, um, we feel, we feel that the stakeholders, uh, both external and internal need to be more engaged in the decision-making process. We heard a little bit of that tonight. I think this is not an uncommon conversation in Boston, um, but that this is something that, uh, worthwhile being concerned with. In terms of, uh, the three core goals that the superintendent has started with, uh, we all are in agreement that she's met them and from developing a five-year strategic plan, securing, uh, dollars for that strategic plan, and then the negotiation of the MIU with, with Desi was, was, um, was done effectively. So again, the overall rating is effective, um, in terms of, uh, the four standards, uh, all those were proficient with the family and community engagement we've seen as being quite exceptional and, and of a high quality, something that we're very impressed by the time energy that superintendent has given to that work. So, um, the, the next part of our conversation, and I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Chair, whether we have the, whether, um, we have the, uh, emotional, intellectual and physical energy to deal with this tonight, but one of the things that we have to think about is the superintendent has identified a set of goals, uh, for the next year. We have to, we, we as a committee need to find a way to, uh, uh, affirm, um, kind of come to an agreement as to how that we will follow through on that. And, and as part of the consensus, that is something we did not do. So that's a very quick, fast, uh, Philadelphia review of, 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 of the areas. I want to make sure that there's opportunity for people, they have other things they want to say, and certainly want to be open to any questions that Dr. Cassilius has about of our summary. Is that fair, Chair LaCanto, my?
Yes, please. Um, Dr. Coleman, I, again, I appreciate you for, uh, just all the work that you put in, in, uh, bringing all this material together, each one of us, um, you know, as a reminder for, um, uh, those that haven't, uh, followed along this process in the past, we haven't had to do a, um, uh, superintendent's review since the year 2017. And so this is somewhat of an unfamiliar process to folks, uh, even for those that are, uh, regular, uh, committee watchers, um, and even, um, more so the fact that, uh, the process has changed somewhat since, uh, we last, um, we last undertook one of these reviews. So, um, we've got, I think, at, at least 10 pages of reviews from each one of the seven of us, which all had to be boiled down into this, uh, very succinct and crisp memo that, uh, you've prepared as a composite, uh, evaluation of the superintendent's performance. And again, you know, this is something that, um, we, uh, have undertaken, um, to give a, um, give some feedback, uh, to the superintendent on her performance, uh, relative to everything that's gone on over the last year. And, you know, we've, we've somewhat joked about, about it many times in, uh, recent meetings. Um, this certainly isn't the job that, uh, the superintendent signed up for, um, or the job that we signed her up for, um, back in, uh, May of 2019. But, um, folks have to adapt, you know? And, um, I think the, uh, the growing pains would be, um, uh, evident in any, uh, adjustment to a large urban, uh, district or, or evident in some of the, um, challenges that we've talked about, uh, in the review. And, um, you know, I think the, the superintendent deserves a lot of credit for going out and asking for folks like school leaders in, in the K-8 Association to give her that feedback as well, um, so that we can continue to grow and refine the way that we operate this district. And I think the, the summary that you've given, Dr. Coleman, is, is really drawing that out, um, both those, um, those big picture, um, achievements that we've seen over the last year around, um, community engagement, uh, the strategic plan, the budget, um, allocations that, uh, the superintendent's been able to, um, obtain on our behalf, or I should say on the district's behalf, um, are all, uh, big highlights, um, for anyone in their first year, um, not to mention the, uh, the, the challenges that we've seen as a district. So, um, I didn't intend to go on a, a bit of a, um, monologue there, but I will note that, um, just before we open up the floor to questions and comments from the committee, uh, you raised the issue of the goals. And from my own position, I, I don't, um, have any issue with the goals that the superintendent's laid out. I think she worked it with you quite a bit, uh, Dr. Coleman, and, uh, trying to refine those goals. And I think they're, um, they're right on the money. Uh, so I, that, I declined actually in, in my review to, um, uh, modify any of those goals because I think they're, they're right on point with where this district needs to take itself over the next year. And I commend the superintendent for having that vision for, uh, the continued, uh, development of the district. Um, but having said that, I do want to make sure that I, I open it up to other members and.
Could I respond?
Oh, yes, please.
Respond to that because I, I actually agree that when, when, as I went through all the, uh, all your evaluations and as you make comments about what you'd want to see going forward, I think the superintendent has caught many of those in the goals that, uh, she is, she's reported for next year. The one thing that's not in her stated goal that was consistent in our conversations was a focus on the organizational structure and explicit focus on that structure, um, in terms of simplifying. So I would point out that that was, and, and no reason, I'm, I'm not saying that as a criticism or that, uh, that it's something that was being avoided, but in terms of the things that came out of our commentary that weren't captured in her goals, that wasn't something that was explicit. So we may say, that's fine, you know, we, we said it and we, we talked about it, or whether we want to, when we're finished, want to make that a more explicit expectation that the clarity of, of the delegation of authority and the clarity, the re, the reorganization needs to continue. And I know that there's an ongoing conversation in the middle of pandemic and getting the schools open, you know, do you really want to spend time focusing on the organization chart? And certainly at this time, that there's a reason to believe that's not happening right now, but certainly by this time next year, we would, do we want to see more clarity in the organizational chart? Is that a goal we have for the superintendent of the district? Or do we want to let that go? I just want to make that explicit because I know that's a powerful conversation that's ongoing.
All right. Um, well, I'm sure you've heard, uh, uh, the members have heard collectively, uh, you and I speaking off Dr. Coleman, so I'm not going to, uh, engage any further on this issue, but I do want to make sure that, um, I allow, uh, some time here for the, uh, the other members to, uh, to chime in. Um, are there any, you know, and, and I do want to note again, each of us have spent, uh, a number of hours and, and time with the superintendent, uh, filling out a, a, a multi-page, um, uh, performance review. So, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this already, but if there's anything that, um, you might want to react to and, and, um, Dr. Coleman's composite review of, uh, the superintendent or his, um, brief summary here of, of how we might think about goals going forward, uh, I'd open up the floor.
I just want to say quickly.
Start with Ms. Robinson, please.
Yeah. Yeah. First of all, I just want to say, um, thank you, Dr. Coleman, for, for pulling all this together, but more importantly, thank you, Dr. Cassilius, uh, for sticking with us for this year. I'm sure this was not the year any of us thought it would be. And so in terms of thinking about moving forward, um, I hope one thing that, um, is sort of the elephant in the room is the pandemic, and we don't even know how that's going to impact us this next year coming, as well as the balancing of the things that we have identified and things that we need to move forward on. So I'm hoping though, that there will be a, a way to really be able to reflect on all that has gone on and what we have learned as we think about how we might be doing education differently, moving forward in a new world of hybrid or whatever it's going to be, but to make sure that we are incorporating lessons learned, um, from this experience, um, as we move forward to look at all of the other critical issues that obviously continue to, to face our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Uh, other members? Mr. O'Neil.
So, um, thank you. And I'd like to directly speak to you, Superintendent, if I may. I, I know it must be kind of excruciating to get a public review and, um, I, I certainly uh, never had that in, in my career. So I, so I acknowledge it, but I, but I just want to talk to you for a minute about, you know, my thoughts, uh, because I think it is important that the public hear how the school committee members feel about you and our advice for you, um, and for them to know the support that we have for you. And so, um, you know, I was, I was trying to think of the appropriate analogy and I, I know the hour is late, but I don't want to give short thrift to this. This is a pretty important topic, right? So, um, I was trying to think of the appropriate analogy and since you're such a, uh, athlete yourself, it was like you had this great career with the Minnesota Wild, right? And you were the center of the team. You're a great goal scorer, you're doing great. And then you decide to try out free agency and the Bruins come knocking and you sign with the Bruins and you start here and then all of a sudden it's like, ah, yo, yeah, great, we're a hockey team. So you get that, but it's a different city, it's a different team, it's different teammates, it's different fans, and now we want you to play defense instead of center. So learn a new position, you're not commissioner, you're superintendent. And so you kind of have to learn a, a new position and a new city. And I have to commend you for how enthusiastically you have jumped in and, um, done that. So when, when I give reviews professionally, I always try to think of three or four things that I think folks are doing well and, and a couple of things that I say, here's some opportunities, you know, that you can focus in on in the coming year. So to me, how you learned, uh, Boston and learned the district and yes, And yes, even though I, I kind of gave you a hard time at the beginning when you said, I'm going to visit 125 schools in, in 100 days. By me having the opportunity to visit several of those schools with you, I was blown away. Even people in the schools that may have said, oh, is it just a PR stunt? She was only here for a half hour. When you brought up a month ago, someone talked about school nurses. And you said, oh, yeah, the school nurse who's in a storage closet in a, in a gymnasium, right? Mr. O'Neil at the Manning School. I went to the Manning School and I forgot where the nurse's office was. And I was there with you that day. Your recall on all of our school buildings and what you learned and what you saw is incredible. So great respect for how you learned our district and our system. I think the work you did on the strategic plan was incredible. And yes, you pivoted because you started with, with some shots that you would come, some ideas you came with this with. But you learned and you listened and the collaboration that you showed on that, the community meetings, the involving all of us, so we all bought into it, I thought was outstanding work. How you pivoted on COVID and what you did for our students and the Chromebooks and the food and, you know, a number of things that did the Wi-Fi access, the remote learning. No one could have seen that coming and the work and the leadership you showed on that. And the fact that you were still out all the time was very impressive. And last year, I have learned a lot this year through your deep commitment to equity. This is such a core value of yours. And we've had the opportunity to have some one-on-one conversations that I have learned from. But more importantly, you have displayed it again and again and again. And, you know, I work in the advertising field. You got to hear something seven times before it starts to think in. I think this city is starting to learn how deeply committed you are to equity and equality for our students and how you are doing everything you can, how you've taken this to heart and how you were trying to bring it to life. And we can be pretty cynical Bostonians some, sometimes, but I think this city is starting to learn how, how core this is and the sense of urgency you feel in trying to make change for our students for the better. In the coming year, I think, you know, and, and I've said this to you privately, but I think it's great to say it publicly as well. Would love to see you focus a little bit more in trying to build your team around you because we're all nervous that, you know, the superintendent can't be everywhere and all, and all things to all people. And, you know, the more you focus on having four or five folks around you that everyone in the district knows, knows you, speaks for you, has your thought process. If they, if they're implementing a decision, they know it's coming from you. I'd rather have five mini-me's of, of Dr. Cassilius out there. And, and, but people that can also help you and that you're willing to hear pushback from them, knowing that helps you make better decisions. So I think that, I think focusing a bit more on the collaboration buy-in, balancing that sense of urgency you feel, you know, you're an education professional. You're seeing things that are bothering you. But, and again, I've said this to you privately, but I think it's better to focus on having two steps forward than it is trying to move five steps forward and get knocked back four steps. And getting buy-in from the frontline of your management team so that implementation can happen for the long term, I, I think would be really helpful. And I know you balance that with the sense of urgency that you feel. And lastly, quite frankly, work-life balance. You know, you and I were on the phone at 10:30 last night. You're 24/7 in this job and this is a marathon, not a sprint. We need you on the ice. You know, we're asking you to play Sadaro Chana minutes in a game, right? But that, he's, he's pretty unusual. So we need you to have a work-life balance because we want you here for the long haul. Because you are going to prove the, improve the opportunities for our students in this district. And that's the bottom line. So that's my personal feedback to you that's also reflected in the write-up. And I'll finish by saying I enjoy working with you. I've learned from you. And I look forward to all of us continuing to improve next year.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neil. Looks like Dr. Rivera wants to add something.
Yeah, I'll be quick because I don't think I can be coherent at this moment. But, but again, I just, I do, I have enjoyed working with you, Dr. Cassilius. And, you know, again, I just appreciate you bringing the juice. And, you know, again, who would have known that we would be in this situation in these challenging times? And, you know, again, I, I really support you. And second, what my, my members have also said, and just want to again, express my appreciation of your focus on, on racial equity in the, in the school district. And, you know, I'm on that journey with you. And also, you know, your goal says, you know, Dr. Coleman, this will be another longer conversation of, you know, how we can help you also achieve those goals. And in particular, around English learners and students with disabilities because we have so much to do in that area. So, so thank you again for, for your leadership during these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. We'll go now to the vice chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Coleman, for doing this. I know it was a lot of work. So thank you so much. And you put it together so succinctly. I don't have many brain cells left either, so I don't know how, how much sense I will make. But I do want to say, thank you. It, it has been, it has been a really rough year. And I really, really want to thank you because it is an unprecedented time. And you really had to pivot in a second and just roll out all of these things. It was, it's not easy. And I know that, you know, things are never perfect. But I want to give you all the respect for really just bringing the team together and for really just being so positive during this time and just so professional and so caring and having a big heart around us. So I really thank you for that. And I, I also echo, you know, I think your community engagement and the sincerity that you bring in talking to families and talking to students. You know, we really were impressed by that when we interviewed you. And that was like a huge reason. I think people felt very connected and you brought that. So I, I do want to thank you. That's something that was, was missing and that we were asking for. And so, as I said in the last school committee meeting, we also have to take some responsibility because we put a lot of pressure and said, really, in the beginning, we wanted you to be front and center on that, rebuilding the trust with families. And so that also meant that between us putting you under that pressure and a pandemic, that you did not have the opportunity to really work internally. So I do agree with Mr. O'Neil's comments. I think there, you know, there's pieces to focus on moving forward, which are about, you know, building the internal team, getting buy-in from the team and, and collaborating and building that team that you haven't had a lot of time to do, to really focus on that, to get those people that are going to help you to, to delegate. Because I, I know you're like a lone wolf and you're like out there and you're doing it. And like you're everywhere and you want to, you want to be everywhere. You want to do everything because that, that's who you are, you know? And that, that is, that is something great. But at the same time, we do want you to, we do want you to stay here longer. So we need for you to make sure that you do have that solid team that's going to help you, like, you know, to make it all happen. And I will also say that, I know it's been pretty rough recently with all these articles, et cetera. And, you know, there's, there's like some validity in terms of the pieces that we talked about in, in the evaluation and that we're talking about now in terms of building that internal team. But I also want to say that you're not a miracle worker. And you did inherit many things that are inherited that, you know, that are wrong with, with our system. So I think, you know, I would ask for people to have patience and to, to know that we're all aware of the things that we need to get better at and where we're aware of the leadership, you know, places that you need to grow. And so we all need to work together and we have to have patience and we have to, to build trust and understand that everybody at the end of the day wants the same thing. We all want our students to be successful. So again, I just want to say thank you. I look forward to working with you. I cannot agree more with Dr. Rivera's comments around the racial equity and your focus on that because for me, it's really important to be able to work with someone that understands it and gets it. And I do not have to explain why that is important and why that should be front and center. So I really thank you and I look forward to continuing to work with you and supporting you. As Dr. Rivera said, it will be great to figure out how we also can support you more better. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. In a break from tradition, I, I started, I think, the, the round of comments from the members with my comments here. So I think it's probably good for us to end on your comments, Vice Chair, and give the superintendent an opportunity to say anything that she'd like to say before we close it out with a note for folks that we will be returning to take a vote on that composite evaluation that Dr. Coleman has put together at the upcoming school committee meeting. So Superintendent, I want to hand it over to you first for an opportunity before we close out this meeting.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members, for the really opportunity to reflect on the past year as well as find areas of which to grow. As Chairman Lucanto said, you know, it was a year like no other that, that we all experienced, I think, and are experiencing and will continue to experience for some time now, and it will be bumpy, I think. And it is a different team, Mr. O'Neil, and, and a different experience and, and a different position. But sometimes I'm a little bit better in defense than I am on offense, you know? So, you know, just continue to get scrappy in the corners and find my way to the net and get, score some wins for, for the kids. But I hope that we'll be able to work forward on, on the really difficult work ahead of cultivating trust. When I first came to this district and went around to the school and community, that was just the evident, that's just such a big piece. And you don't, you don't win that right away. It just takes a while to really develop that trust. And, and in a pandemic, it makes it just all that much harder to try to do through Zoom when you can't, or, or to socially distance when you can't hug somebody or, you know, be in the same room with somebody and feel their presence. And so I think that that makes it a lot more difficult. And, but I do hear you loud and clear about turning internally and choosing a really good team and picking a team around me. And that's throughout the organization, not just my executive team, who I'm very proud of, the work that they've really pulled together to do over this pandemic period. But, you know, there are a lot of opportunities within the district to restructure and to think differently about how we support our principals and how we support the teachers in this district and hear their voice and listen to them and collaborate with them better. And I'm committed to doing that. So I take that feedback to heart and I took it to heart from the principals. We've already made some really important shifts and changes. And I really appreciate all of you and the support that you've given to me this year in this really incredible work that we're doing. I do have a deep sense of equity, you know, as a black woman and as someone who grew up in poverty. It has been my life mission to make a difference for children. And that is what I was, came to Boston to do. And I knew it would not be easy and I knew it would be bumpy and I knew there would be firestorms. Because when you are doing the real work of anti-racism and when you are doing the real work of equity, it will be difficult because you will be moving people's cheese and asking them to be a little bit more uncomfortable than what they're used to. So I just ask for you to lean into that, be patient and understand the conflict that that brings. But it is a healthy conflict to get to the win of greater sense of equity for our children and a greater sense of opportunity and access. And so with that, I will just say thank you again. And I look forward and I'm humbled to be superintendent here in Boston and continue to work with all of you. So thank you.
Well, thank you as well, Superintendent. And, you know, I think we should take a special moment just to thank you and acknowledge, you know, your poise throughout this process. As Mr. O'Neil noted, getting a public performance review is no easy feat, you know? Many people who run for office get that review every two or four years at the ballot box. But in a role like this and having this reviewed on, on an annual basis, I'm not actually sure if this is something that happens in other places outside of Massachusetts. I'm seeing Mr. O'Neil shake his head, yes. So I assume it does happen in a number of other places. But nevertheless, we appreciate that you've, you know, handled this with poise, particularly as the vice chair noted as well, the feedback that has been received in the media lately. It's, it can be tough and this can be a tough town. Just, just ask your Twitter account, right? But nevertheless, we're in it for the long haul. We want long-term stability and success in this district. That's why we hired you. That's why we, we saw in you the ability to create that trust and repair that relationship that we want with our community to ensure that we are creating better outcomes for our kids and creating better opportunities for our children as they grow old in our schools and hopefully come back and serve this city and serve our neighbors for years and decades to come. So I'm happy to be a partner with you in that work and I think all of us can say the same for that. And we look forward to an even better second year with maybe just a few less distractions that were no fault of our own in, that we've seen over this past year. So we'll look forward again to taking action at the next meeting. And of course, I think we, you know, what might be helpful for us, just to go back on the item where Dr. Coleman started a little earlier with the, the goals. I might ask all of my fellow members to take a moment to go back to the goals that you set for yourself in the self-evaluation document, Superintendent, which is also included as an appendix to the, the composite document that Dr. Coleman put together. Take a look at those. And perhaps we can have a bit of a fuller conversation on goal setting at our next meeting. And if it makes sense for us to schedule something even further beyond that, either through a school committee meeting or through a retreat to talk a little bit more about goals. I think, you know, we probably should take a step back at some point, probably after September 10th, once we get through a lot of the tactical work we're doing and start thinking about the strategic work once again.
Mr. Chair, may I make one comment on that as well?
Please.
I think it is critical that we have done this evaluation process openly, fairly, respectfully. We're also, not only is this important for the superintendent, but we're modeling behavior. We're asking our school leaders to do evaluations of every single one of the teachers. We're asking district superintendents to do evaluations of every one of the school leaders. We're asking the superintendent to do it of her team. Everyone deserves to have an evaluation. And I think it's important that we're modeling behavior. For example, we're asking school leaders to have artifacts for their work. I went out and talked to about 20 different school leaders, nonprofit heads, business heads, partners, et cetera, to get their thoughts to, to inform, you know, almost artifacts, so to speak, for my thought process. And I know all of us, you know, did very similar work that way. And I think ultimately, it's also important for the school committee to figure out a self-evaluation process for us as well as the committee. And maybe that's something to think about as a, in a retreat. Because again, this is all about modeling behavior to the rest of our district.
Indeed. Thank you for, for those thoughts. Dr. Coleman, before we, we close this out, I do just want to circle back on that goals-setting trajectory that I, I just framed out and see if you had any further thoughts. And certainly don't want to put you on the spot at a quarter to one to have any fully formed thoughts on this process. But the process that I've sort of framed out here, is that something that would be in line with your thinking? This has been, you know, your baby to a large extent over the last number of months. This has been, you know, your baby to a large extent over the last number of months.
Well, no, I, yeah, yeah, I think that'd be great if if people could take the time to kind of redo, look at the goals and and just kind of do, add a commentary to their evaluation. And that they will figure out a timeline that they get to me and that I can do another composite of those reactions and have that in time for our next meeting.
Great. Very good. Okay. Well, I think we're we're actually done with our reports at 12:41. So I think we're gonna ask Ms. Sullivan, are there any public comment on reports?
No, we have no speakers.
Well, apparently, I don't know where Mr. Mudd's been, but apparently he's lost interest in public comment on reports with us recently. Must have found a new school committee to
Don't bait the bear.
What's that?
Don't bait the bear.
I would also say that would be our loss if he did, because I always learn from Mr. Mudd's comments and thoughts.
Well, I I don't want to raise anyone's alarm. I believe Mr. Mudd has in fact been very active with the task forces between OAG and EOL. So I I believe he is safe and sound, but
Yes, he is. I've heard from him. So he's great.
Very good. I hope he'll send, he'll drop me a line after I mention him tonight. Well, okay, I'll look around to the members, any new business? Well, hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. We'll take up our next school committee meeting two weeks from tonight or two weeks from last night on Wednesday, August 19th at 5:00 PM here on Zoom. Seven hours and 43 minutes later, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Sounds like unanimous consent, but we still have to take a roll, a brief roll call, unfortunately. Ms. Sullivan?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davala?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, 7:00, no abstentions, this meeting's adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night. Bye-bye.